Okay, thanks for coming in tonight. Under the circumstances, I thought it would be a good idea to start off our down period with an update on the superintendent and then talk about ways moving forward as much as we can with as few facts as we do right now, but that's the nature of the game. As far as moving forward in meetings, I plan on only doing it when we need to do it and consider the risk involved. And there are some options that the governor put out in terms of, you know, having public participation at these types of meetings that we might be able to work around and perhaps do these technology if we need to have meetings. So I'm sure there's going to be decision points that are going to come up in the future that you'll need us to weigh in on. So again, we'll play it by ear, best we can do at this point. So why don't we start out with the superintendent's report?
Sure. So I provided you with three different documents, all from today, two of which came from the Commissioner of Education, one I received this morning, and one I received just moments before this meeting where the Commissioner undoes some of the information from the letter that came out this morning. So that's how quickly the information is changing as we move through this process. So originally, the state of Connecticut had been recommending that districts close in full and do not provide or do not attempt to provide any type of distance learning, et cetera, during the closure. But then everybody started to realize, well, we could be closed down for significant periods of time. And so then the recommendation was still to close fully. However, if districts wanted to apply for a waiver testifying, the board chair and the superintendent would have to sign off attesting to the fact that we would be able to meet the educational needs of every single kid in the district via some sort of alternative educational program. And then this morning, we received the first correspondence from the Commissioner where he indicated that the shift was to move away from supplemental educational opportunities for kids and just go all in on providing distance learning opportunities for all students. The waiver process was still in place this morning, so districts would still have to apply, but we could apply retroactively, right? So we could go ahead and start no matter where we were in the planning process, and then we could apply for the waiver later on. The correspondence that I received right before the meeting eliminates the waiver application in its entirety. So districts no longer have to apply for the waiver. We will, districts across the state will be engaged as best as each district can in distance learning opportunities. As you know, it has always been our intention to be able to provide alternative school sessions for our students. Originally, when we were going to be pushed to attest to the fact that we were going to meet the needs of every single student, it became a little issue because the guidance from the state said that each district will assume all risk, right? And so we kind of backed off, but we were moving forward with our planning because we wanted to be able to do this. If it wasn't going to be for this COVID-19 event, there will likely be some other type of event at some time, a weather event or whatever, where we might have to close. And so we wanted to have a plan in place. So the teachers, the administrators, we've all been working on putting a plan in place. With the guidance that came this morning and again this evening right before this meeting, we're ready to go ahead and put something in place. I've already sent an email out to the district staff. Many of them have already been contacting their students. I put a letter together for the parents, providing them with some information that we will begin alternative school sessions starting this Wednesday. We're going to operate so that parents and students know when our staff will be available, we're going to operate that under the early closure, planned early closure schedule for each of the schools. And so students and parents will know that teachers will be online monitoring their emails. They'll, you know, if we're, the teachers using a specific app like Google Hangout or something like that, they will be present in those areas during those hours. But we also understand that kids' lives and families' lives are going to be severely disrupted by this effect, right? So we understand that a lot of the learning could happen asynchronously. And so the teachers will be pushing out assignments and information, resources to their students during those hours, and then kids will be receiving it, and then they could work on it when their lives allow them to, right? A lot of children may not be able to have access without adult supervision, et cetera. And so they have to wait for adults in their lives to be present in order for them to do the work. And so as children complete the work, they will submit it back through the same avenues in which the teachers are working with them. And then the teachers will receive that information again during those early, planned early closure hours. Teachers will be in collecting work that children are submitting. They'll be providing feedback to the students. We're going to hold off, I think for now, we're not really sure how the whole grading thing will work. You know, we need to judge and gather information on participation rates on our students, et cetera. This could become a little bit of an experiment in mastery-based assessing kids. So the kids that are actively participating and showing mastery, that could be one way we handle it. Somebody had suggested, well, can it become pass/fail for the rest of the year? So we're still looking at how we're going to handle it. On the state side, the governor has given the Commissioner of Education broad powers to waive certain requirements. So graduation requirements, the Commissioner can waive those, right? So we would have to let him know which things we may need to be waived unless he does something like he did with distance learning and just says, "A district can graduate their children based upon the standards that we put in place due to this event." So we're still waiting a little bit on guidance from that, but graduation requirements are going to get waived, attendance requirements are waived, we won't be held accountable for chronic absenteeism as districts normally are. We're still waiting a little bit on state assessments. That is dependent upon the federal government, because so that's an obligation that we have to the state and then the state has to the feds. So we're still waiting on that. But today, the president has issued like a general state of emergency, notified Connecticut that they've accepted the governor's request for a state of emergency. So in the call that I had at 5:00 today, the governor held a statewide call with municipal leaders and superintendents, et cetera. We were told that we are on full state of emergency status with full activation at the Emergency Operations Center. So things are really ramping up with the concern over the spread of COVID-19. So things can be changing, like I got two letters from the Commissioner today. It could be happening much more quickly. I could be sending daily emails out, I could be issuing a daily letter to parents. I had a question from a board member slash parent about is it safe to use the Playscapes? So I'm looking into that kind of information and I'll get that out to parents. And so there are just a bunch of little things that still need to be communicated. At our end, so we're going to be actively engaged in alternative school sessions beginning Wednesday. We will also be providing free meals to all of our students, right? So originally, we thought that it would be pay for pay students and free and reduced for those students, but we applied for a waiver, our waiver was accepted. So all kids, now we're going to get free meals, and not only our students, but if there are children living in the homes of our students that are 18 or under, they will also get meals even if they're not students in our school system. And so we're going to provide meals. We received confirmation from the state today that our plan to provide multiple days' worth of meals at a time is acceptable. Originally, they told us, no, you could only do two meals at a time, and they could be two meals for that day or one meal for that day and one meal for the next day. And so we made the argument about, you know, limiting contact with other people, and doesn't it make sense that we would give out more than one day's worth of food at a time? And they agreed and allowed us to do it.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
One of our watchers just texted in and said, "The sound is not going over well on the video." So I don't know if it's, the mic's not close enough?
Does everyone have their microphones on?
I do.
I think she's getting sound, but it's not, all right, she said it just got fixed at 7:10.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, watcher. So our meal program will also start on Wednesday. Wednesday's meals, it'll be two meals packaged per student. It will be a breakfast and a lunch. We're going to distribute them between the hours of 9:00 and 10:00 in the morning, and we'll see how the first day goes. If that is not enough time to get everybody through the line, or if we need to start earlier or do it later in the day, then, you know, we'll make adjustments as we go. But right now, we're planning for two meals on Wednesday. People will come back on Thursday, and then they'll get four meals. So it'll be for Thursday and Friday. It'll be two breakfasts and two lunches per student. We're not allowed to provide any more than two meals per child. So we couldn't, and they can't be lunch and dinner. So we could do breakfast and dinner or breakfast and lunch, but we can't do lunch and dinner. I think I saw a question.
Quick question. So on the first day, you said it's 9:00 to 10:00?
9:00 to 10:00 in the morning.
Right. So if there's people still waiting in line, obviously you're not going to stop at 10:00, correct?
No, we'll keep going until the line is gone.
Okay.
Right? You're welcome. And then the following week, and if we end up staying out for longer, we will do Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Mondays and Wednesdays will be, again, two days' worth of meals, a breakfast and a lunch for two days. And then on Fridays, it'll be one day, and we'll just keep repeating that. So we have enough food right now, we think, for the rest of this week and all of next week, but we're also scheduled to get a delivery tomorrow, not tomorrow, Wednesday. Tomorrow, Wednesday, tomorrow is?
No, it's tomorrow, Tuesday.
Losing track of the time because I worked all weekend with this. So Wednesday, we will get a delivery, and we should have enough food to last us for another couple of weeks. So it really is going to come down to whether or not we're able to continue to get deliveries and whether or not staff stay healthy enough to be able to distribute the food, right? And so as soon as we're not able to distribute food, I will notify the families that we have to cease the program. But we'll keep it going for as long as we can. Because we have a waiver that's been accepted, I think we're one of like 89 districts so far have had waivers accepted. Because we had our waiver accepted, all the meals that we give away are reimbursable through the federal lunch program. So that's where we are with some educational updates and the food update. We're still...
Could you just one more time, the location and the times?
Yeah, thank you, Bill. So the location for the distribution of the meals is Lyman Memorial High School. So families will drive up, come across the front of the school, and the very right-hand side of the school when you're facing it is a little courtyard, right? And so that's easy access for our cafeteria people to set up a distribution point. And so that's where it's going to be, in that little cement courtyard in the front of Lyman on the right-hand side. So cars will pull up, the staff will be right there, we'll distribute the food, and off they go. And so hopefully, we'll have a nice, well-oiled machine to keep that line moving.
And the times?
Between 9:00 and 10:00 a.m., starting on Wednesday, and then again on Thursday this week. You're welcome, thank you.
So what other questions on the meals? Do you know if these meals will be strictly cold meals?
Yes.
Okay.
No hot meals.
So I mean, but not intended to be heated up or anything like that when they get home in the microwave?
Ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, prepackaged foods, they will comply with the healthy food laws as best we can, but the waiver also allows us to stray a little bit if we have to, depending upon what foods we have available to share.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other updates?
So some things that we're still working on, so staff have been asking, even though the governor closed the schools down, can they still come in and get their things that they may need to work with kids? And so I had to seek clarification on that, and the answer is yes, right? Until we're told that you have to vacate the buildings, people could still come in. But the whole idea of closing schools is for social distancing, right? And so we don't want people to come in and stay all day. It's really got to be come in, grab your stuff and go. Originally, we thought we could social distance by keeping people siloed in their rooms and away from each other, but the CDC guidelines really wouldn't allow us to do it. Just because of the sheer number of people, right? 12-month employees report, and so that's what we're doing until we're told that we cannot. And so the admin team, custodians, year-round secretaries, the year-round technicians, IT folks, they're all still coming in. And I'm going to let staff come in, get things that they need, and then leave until we're told otherwise. Folks have been asking, you know, my child has left their Chromebook in their locker, can I come and get it? And so in the letter, I've directed parents to call the schools, right? So as of now, yes, they can, but if that changes, you know, I'll alert them via a letter, but I'll also alert the schools to tell parents that they can no longer come in. But right now, we're going to allow that. Also, the elementary staff, that we're one-to-one device, you know, all the way down to second grade, right? We only allow our fifth through 12th graders to take their devices home because we really felt it wasn't appropriate for the younger kids to do that. But the staff, the elementary staff, use those devices with their kids, and they're feeling like it could be an advantage for our students now to be able to take those devices home. We do not have the Go Guardian software on those like we do for the middle and high school kids. So I just sent Jac an email a little while ago to find out what the cost is and how quickly we could get that onto Chromebooks. I don't know that we'd be able to do it for all the students in all the grades, all the kids at the elementary school. Some of the, the youngest kids don't have Chromebooks, they're using iPads, right? And so I think we might have to forego that. But if we can get at least to the fourth grade team, they're the most anxious about letting their kids have their Chromebooks. So if we could do fourth grade and then maybe third, so we're going to look into it. I haven't heard yet from the second grade teachers whether or not they want their kids to have their books, but we're going to look into all the LES Chromebooks as a just-in-case. And I don't know that parents are going to want all the devices coming home, and so that's another issue, but they might welcome it. I did provide, I saw your hand.
Yep. I just, as a safety concern, is anybody concerned about giving out these devices and then when they return, possible infection to the, how are we, are we going to do anything to clean up the devices before they enter the schools, or we're just not worried about it?
So have not really thought about that, to be honest with you. But people are, have been encouraged to wipe down keyboards, et cetera, with disinfectant wipes. I don't know that people have them because the stores ran out, right? And so until the stores get their new shipments, and I don't know what the availability is. I do know that the coronavirus, I have been told in several different meetings with the UNCA Health, et cetera, that it's easy to kill, right? That's why they say, you know, hand soap is enough to do the trick. Keep washing your hands. Wash my hands so much they're turning red. But, you know, so it's easy to kill, and common cleaning agents kill the coronavirus.
Okay.
So you don't necessarily have to rely on any kind of special cleaner.
Okay.
Okay?
Maybe that's something to put on the to-do list for the first day back is...
Yeah, wipe them down.
Administrative things that we'll need to do to reintegrate the kids back to the schools. I'm sure there's going to be other things like that.
Yeah.
Just put it on the list, wipe them down, you know, first thing in the morning.
Yep.
Back to work. Matt?
Also, simple time takes care of it also.
Okay.
On a Chromebook, it's a hard surface, does not, over 24 hours, it's gone.
Okay.
Yeah, and so...
Quarantine period, so if the kids brought them back on a Friday and didn't touch them until the following Monday, that might, that probably would be more than sufficient.
Yeah, so the good news is, you know, the data that has been shared is that the coronavirus can live, you know, for a certain amount of hours, but generally doesn't last for a whole day. Just a few hours, it could live. I think copper is one of the surfaces it may live a little bit longer on, and then cardboard, up to a day. But I'm sure there's more testing going on to see if, you know, how accurate those numbers are, right? So we feel like every day, we walk into a building that is Corona-free because everything should have died overnight, right? Except for maybe on some boxes that came at, depending on what time they were delivered during the day, right? But the custodians are wiping everything down on a daily basis now. So one of the concerns regarding the health of staff came from our custodians, right? Because if you watch the news, you see people walking around in like hazmat suits, spraying disinfectant all over the place, and they said, "Well, is that what we should be doing in this school?" So again, I confirmed today with Patrick McCormick, the executive director at UNCA Health District, and he said, you know, they should be wearing gloves, but the hazmat suits and spraying chemicals. He said the normal way we clean buildings should suffice, but your staff should be, you know, wearing gloves. And I've told them, you know, we have the hand sanitizer stations all around the buildings, we have lavatories with soap, et cetera, that they should be taking time to clean themselves, use the sanitizer, or wash up several times during the day. But the recommendation hasn't been for any extreme measures in order to keep the buildings clean.
Can I ask another question? So this waiver here from the state of Connecticut, this says that all the schools are going to be, we don't have to apply for the waiver, that we're automatically...
We're automatically in.
Because we're doing the alternative setting?
Yes.
Does that mean that our four snow days plus Monday and Tuesday still count as snow days?
Yes.
Okay, so not, so today and tomorrow are still snow days?
So we would officially have six?
Six, which puts us at what day?
It would be the 19th, I think.
Okay. Is there a possibility, I mean, if we go like a month into this or, you know, six weeks into this, is there a possibility that we will still get out early, or is it definitely June 30th?
So it really, it really depends, right? So originally, I wanted the board to meet tonight, so, because I thought we were going to have school today, and then school tomorrow, and then maybe we'd be sending folks home on Wednesday. And then it became apparent that we needed to cancel for today, and then for all the districts that didn't cancel, the governor made the decision, all right, for those districts starting after school today. So I don't know how many districts did not. I heard about 10% of the districts were still scheduled to continue on, but then the governor canceled. So we are in the 90% that had canceled.
So there is a possibility that June 30th is not the last day for everybody?
That is correct. We might still be able to graduate earlier.
Okay.
So we have to get our alternative learning sessions up and running, and then determine how that's working, and then we could set a graduation date, I think, once we have that in place.
Okay.
So at this time, you know, I wanted to lock it in thinking, I didn't want to push everything out to June 30th, but we may not have to do that now.
Okay, very good.
So for the seniors, the word right now is to stand by?
Yes.
Okay. We don't have anything to announce right now?
No, we don't.
Okay. All right. Your list is done, or?
Let me see. So in the 5:00 call today, you know, the governor clarified for us that there isn't a curfew. There was some misunderstanding by some people who were on that call that because he closed bars and restaurants effective 8:00 p.m. tonight, that there was in fact a curfew. So the governor has said that there is no curfew. He's just closing down places where large groups of people congregate, so gyms and bars and restaurants. You know, in times of crisis, sometimes, you know, people need to work out a little stress so they go to the gym, or they need to, you know, just have a little fun to ease the tension, and so they go out to a restaurant, right? And so the governor is taking that away, not because he doesn't want us to be de-stressed, but because he's trying to slow the spread of COVID. He also has limited places of worship to 50, right? And so he hasn't closed places of worship, and I'm not sure that he can, but he is enforcing a 50-person threshold at this time. He made mention of something that was in a press release from this morning, that the state is working on a free, online educational resource that's going to be available to all public school students in the state of Connecticut. It's not ready for re... It's not ready for release yet, but he indicated during that call that it would be coming soon. So we, we don't know how soon that would be. He also said that the state has been able to expand to several different hospitals now for testing, none of which are in this area, most of them down towards Fairfield County because that's where most of the cases still are. But he does expect that to expand to other places. These are not walk-ins though, you have to be sent there by a doctor, okay? He will have another statewide call on Friday at 5:00 PM, so I'll be sitting in on that. But he also said that from yesterday to today, the number of confirmed cases in the state has almost doubled. And so yesterday it was in the twenties, today it's 41. And so it's starting to tick up in Connecticut.
I have another question. This is actually from a person watching. April vacation, would that still fall under, if we, if we come back to school before April vacation, is it automatically taken away from us to make up or?
No, so the commissioner has made it clear that that is a school district decision, right? And so because the 180-day waiver is in place, originally the, the requirement was use every available day to make up the days, but since the commissioner has allowed us to forge ahead with the alternative learning sessions, then we will not be using April vacation, right? So that is the most likely scenario. Another likely scenario is we'll still be closed during April vacation, right? Well, I can't say that for a fact.
Yep.
But everybody is saying, hey, you're closed for two weeks now, but really it's gonna be probably four and maybe six.
Okay.
Right? But we'll be updating that as we get that information. So it could be that closure will occur during April vacation.
Okay. And one more question. They would like to know, when are the teachers available from the schools? What times are they available?
So the teachers are available during the hours of the early closing schedule, so that was included in the letter for those of you at home that are parents. You received this letter via Thrill Share today. But Lyman Memorial High School is a normal starting time and then will end at 11:55 AM. Lebanon Middle School is a normal starting time, but will end at 12:10 PM. Lebanon Elementary School for grades K to four, normal starting time, but will end at 1:05 PM. AM pre-K, normal starting time and will end at 10:45. So that's 8:35 to 10:45 for AM pre-K. PM pre-K, 10:45 to 1:05.
So just to clarify, starting Wednesday, parents can email their teachers during those times, start of the school day too, these times listed, and possibly get in touch with their teachers for questions?
Yeah, not, well, the, parents could email at any time, but these are the hours that we're asking teachers to be available to respond to those emails.
Right.
So parents could email at any time, they just have to understand that the response may not occur until these times.
Yep. And then does this go on for the entire time that we're out or just this week?
So this is the plan moving forward.
For the rest of the time we're out?
If anything changes, word will be sent out, but that's the plan right now.
Okay. Great. That's all the questions I have right now.
Jac?
Bob, the district I work with, we happen to have a PD day on Friday, so we were able to address some of this stuff. One of the things that, that happened that I haven't heard you speak about is our superintendent met with our, our education association and came up with a memorandum agreement during these times, just, you know, specifics. I don't know if you've thought about that or are we, is something we wanna, I know it's crazy stuff going on, but.
So, so I have thought about that. Right now, because of the way we're approaching being able to provide the alternative school sessions and engaging with all of our certified staff through that process, right? So this is not just the teachers, it's our school counselors, our school social worker, therapist, et cetera. They're, they're all engaged during those school hours and we're gonna be counting those as school days. So the impact we're thinking right now could be minimal for the teachers group, the administrative group. Where things could be a little bit different would be in our non-certified folks. So right now, we have all our 12-month employees reporting, right? And so they're, they're working, they're getting paid. We have not laid off any employees at this time. We're gonna maintain payroll. The way we structure our payroll is that we calculate the hours, the regularly scheduled hours that people work, including full days, part-time days, et cetera, and then divide that salary out over the pay periods for the school year. So if we're gonna be making up some days and if we're able to keep our employees actively engaged in the educational process, then they will have been working for the district and we'll continue paying them. So if the prolonged, if, if the closure gets so prolonged that we are no longer able to keep everybody working for the education of, of the kids, et cetera, then I would be engaging the unions in some sort of negotiation. If we were to have to lay off employees, I would let them know in advance. Some employers have been laying off employees during this process. They're allowed to apply for unemployment compensation. But right now, we're gonna maintain payroll and we're gonna actively engage our employees in constructive work for the schools.
If you need it, my superintendent gave me the template that they were working under, so if you wanna take a look at a copy, just for your own.
Yeah, thank you. So superintendents have been sharing those documents. I don't know that I have that one, but if you have it, I'd be happy to take a look at.
Sure.
Thank you.
Hi. I just wanted to say, I was really impressed that today, you know, I have a child in each school, but two out of the three of them already have been contacted by teachers who are being super proactive and really engaged in, in this difficult time. I'm just wondering, at the elementary school, I know it's gonna look a lot different, should elementary school parents be expecting to hear from their child's teacher?
So the elementary teachers will be contacting. Part of the conversation that I've had with administrative team and then I met with Kathleen and Jeanette, our LEA presidents, has been, can the teachers come in? So today we were gonna have a half-day so that teachers could, especially at the elementary level, put packets together. Some of the teachers came in today and did do that and then called the parents and the parents came in and picked them up, but not all the teachers have been able to do that. Because, because we still, we are still allowed to bring a staff into the buildings and, and I just recently got the confirmation of that, I'm gonna re-message staff, in particular elementary teachers. The principal, Rita, asked me, could we mail things out? So we're gonna look at different ways of getting the information to the elementary folks. And again, we're looking at whether or not we're gonna be able to send the Chromebooks home for those kids because we do do online learning with, even with some of our youngest kids.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just speak as an elementary school teacher and I've been in contact with Rita? I know that, I don't wanna say many, but more than several.
Kathleen, can you just use one of the microphones?
Come up here.
So people at home can hear.
Make sure it's on.
Sorry.
Turn it on, Kathleen.
Okay. There you go. Kathleen Smith, fourth grade teacher at the elementary school. I was in contact with Rita about a half hour ago as I had sent a letter to all of my parents that I had emailed contact with. And she had told me that many, maybe not many, more than several elementary school teachers have made contact and I think you can expect contact tomorrow from anyone that has them.
Thank you. Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
In your particular class, in your class alone, do you have emails for all your students?
I presently do, just because I reached out to one parent that I normally communicate in instant messaging only and I have that one. And another one that I didn't have, I communicated with another teacher and was able to get that one.
Okay.
And I know that I would be sharing one of the emails with other teachers that work with a student, you know, to make sure that they have it. So I think there's a lot of collaboration between the teachers.
I'm just concerned about holes.
So yes, I do, yes, I, I do presently, I have every student's parents' email.
Thank you.
So when students register for the school, that's part of the registration process is to collect the emails of the parents. And so we tend to get most of them, sometimes not all of them, but because of this, teachers like Kathleen have been proactively going after the ones that they didn't already have. And so we'll continue with that process.
Right. Yeah, my only concern is I belong to another organization and we try to do everything through email and not everyone has an email.
Yeah. Just a couple of questions on the, the tech side of it. I saw in your letter there was a process by which parents could contact, I think Spectrum, to have, I guess they're gonna come out and put a broadband device in their house so that they could.
So I'm, I'm not sure of how that works. When I met with Kathleen and Jeanette earlier today, Kathleen shared with me that a local internet provider was offering free internet service during the school closures. And so I did provide that number. The internet provider is Spectrum. And so for those of you watching, the number is 1-844-488-8398. I don't know, you know, the equipment and the process involved, but if they call the number, folks can get that information.
Is that something that we could support them with if, if they're having problems negotiating that exchange? In other words, if they're having problems dealing with Spectrum, could we help in any way?
Well, I guess they, folks could call the, call the schools and let us know if there's a problem with that.
Yeah. I, I, these are all the, I think these are the bumps and hurdles you go through when you do something new like this. And sometimes if people aren't familiar with what technology can do or how easy it is to set something up, they just get stuck and they don't ask for help. I just want, I would prefer if they could reach out to somebody and ask for help and get.
Yeah, so if they call Spectrum and are having some difficulties, they could let us know and then we'll call Spectrum and, and find out what issues are happening.
Yeah, Jeanette?
I'm sorry.
We could probably move, pull the mic over there.
I told you I was having surgery.
I do.
Is it on?
Yep.
I do wanna point out that there are some parts of town not covered by Spectrum. One of our own teachers only has access to dial-up. And for those kids, we'll just have to know that it may take them a little longer to get their work, not everybody is covered by Spectrum.
Yeah.
So that's what happens, happens when we live in a rural area, unfortunately, not everyone has access to that.
That's a good point. And it'd be nice to know, cause there's other technologies, like we talked about, the Verizon hotspots or, they give you something that they can, that you can, very cheap.
So our IT director, Jacques Dulac, is looking, has looked into that for us. So parents, families of our students that may have some difficulty if they live outside of the Spectrum area can let us know. We, we don't actually have any of those hotspots in district, but we are seeing if they are available.
Yeah, I mean, they're very cost-effective and especially for temporary. There's no guarantees that it can hit the cell tower either, but, you know, between the two, we might be able to put something together.
Yeah, as long as there's access to, it's Verizon, I call. We use them for, we use them for our cell phones, our mobile phones, and as long as there's service, we could get that. And I did talk to the, our representative and he said if we purchased the device, we could just buy a month or two months, whatever we needed, without any cancellation fee.
Yeah.
So I did get the prices to you, but they weren't bad at all. So we could look into that if we needed, needed to.
Yeah, and I think.
We really wanna encourage parents that, that if they do have problems, just to let, let us, we want that to get back to us and we wanna try to help.
Definitely. The other thing is for any future meetings I mentioned at the beginning, if we, as an alternative, perhaps doing some type of teleconference setup, I assume you guys have teleconference capability?
We do, we do. We'd have to make sure that we can comply with.
Yep.
The guidelines put forth in, in the waivers.
Yep. So if you, if you don't mind just looking into that, I don't think it's an immediate thing, but it may be a case where we need a decision that you, you know, something's coming up and depending on the circumstances, instead of calling everybody in, you know, it could be the option to set up the, the telecon, you know, teleconference here and then just have people call in. You know, so maybe Maureen can look at the policy on our teleconference procedures.
I wonder if we have any, I don't remember.
Yeah, we do and.
Goodness, yeah.
But the governor has also provided some waivers.
Yeah.
Around the rules for FOIA and et cetera, right?
Yep.
The governor's also provided some waivers to municipalities regarding budget timelines and so he's provided some relief for towns so that we don't have to force meetings, et cetera, to get budgets done.
Was there any questions from the board about any of the handouts that went around over the weekend? Bob hit on one, the budget process was, you know, they're authorized to delay that and we'll, we'll just follow, fall in the ranks behind the town, you know, so we'll follow the town whenever the town, you know, figures out what their schedule's gonna be, so that's off of us. Okay, any other questions right now?
I just have a comment, it might be good for everybody to know that the library is closed and one of the board members did question whether we could do something because this, at this time would be good that, for children to have access to stuff like that. No, no decisions have been made yet, but I think the Matt's meeting with his selectmen tomorrow and, but it's closed.
All right. The next item on the agenda is public participation. Would any of the public like to chance to talk to the board?
Wait a minute, can you stay there, please?
Stay there, please.
I can't.
I don't think I got it on court.
I think so.
Where's the table?
Is it on?
It is on.
Actually, um, well, that's.
Oh, my goodness. I just wanted to address the issue that was brought up by Mr. Cornell about the memorandum of understanding. In our UNICEF group, which I believe is a different group than your school system that you teach for, they have talked about it being prudent to have a memorandum of understanding and the UNICEF group is working on putting something together that could be sort of a blanket form, just like you were offering yours. So. So when something like that is available, then we could share that with you.
That would be great.
It covers, as you were saying, it covers us just in case.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, the next item on the agenda is the action item. Is there any action that would be taken on that tonight?
Not tonight.
Okay, no action on item number four. Request for executive session tonight for the purpose of discussing security protocols with the schools during COVID-19. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved. I moved we go into executive session to discuss security protocols.
Yeah, who would you, invite anybody to attend with us?
Yes, the superintendent.
Okay.
Yes, the superintendent.
Second.
Second that.
Yep.
Motion by Maureen, second by Nicole. Requires two-thirds vote. All in favor of the executive session? Okay, that is unanimous. We are now in executive session with the superintendent. Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks for input. From the commissioner?
Yes.
Yeah.